Winterford Town Council meeting of February 18th to order. The meeting is being telecast by WCAT live and for future audiences, I'm sure you can get on and see it in the future. Could we please have a pledge of allegiance and I ask Council Honan to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a roll call.
Council Jerome.
Here.
Council Flockhart.
Present.
Council DeMarco. Council Christopher.
Here.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council LaConte.
Well, I'm here.
Council Farino.
Here.
Vice President Luttey.
Here.
President Boncori.
Here.
Thank you.
And Council DeMarco should be here any second. Minutes, could you have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have.
Is there a second? Our motion been made and seconded.
Do you have some issues with it, Father?
Alterations, any changes?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay, they're minor, but I found it a little difficult to understand as I've read through. Is it appropriate to make some changes to make it easier to understand?
Yes, absolutely.
Just submit it to Denise.
Well, you can vote on, you can vote on as amended.
On the amendments.
As amended. Okay.
Okay, what amendments would you like?
Well, there's a change of verbs here and there from present to, what's the other, subjective. And, let's see, and adding a comma here and there. Under town manager replies, it seems to me, instead of reading town manager replies, they are not clearly designated boundaries with this property and now, dot, dot, dot. It should take out the they and move boundaries with this property before are not clearly designated. So it makes it more understandable.
Council Flockhart, are they just grammatical changes?
Essential.
Okay, so then you don't, she doesn't have to list through all the grammatical changes, she can just submit them to twice and you can vote on them.
Okay, are they all grammatical?
They're grammatical or, no substantive changes.
Okay.
Any other changes, alterations, amendments? Hearing none, then, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, then it's approved. And we will now open up public comment. Any public comment? Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Tracy Precinct, one. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good for me. It's come to my attention that there's something being voted on tonight under old business, under the committee handbook, and I'm concerned that the handbook will change or be an amendment to the town charter and how things are run in committees. As a serving board member, I'm concerned that this will have any outlook on how we conduct business within the town on the licensing board and any other board that is currently serving. So, what I'd like to do or ask of you all is to consider having the citizens and residents of the town of Winterford, as well as the current sitting board members, look at these changes that you're looking to implement and get feedback from the people that are actually serving on these boards, so that we can all make a decision together as a town and everybody feel comfortable and have no sort of issues or underlying issues that people say that, you know, they weren't told about certain things. So, thank you for listening and a great meeting.
Any other public comment?
I, Karen Chavez, Precinct Two. On January 7th, I had three very specific questions for the town manager. One of them about the money from the new building, the new school, high school building, what was going to happen with that, I think that's been just about solved. I'm still not happy with the ferry. I'm not looking at what the ferry budget is. I want to know what the ferry has now in their budget now, not anticipating, what they have now to stop the season. Do they have money to put that ferry in the water? It might already be in the water, I don't know, but I need to man it and to be able to use it as the ferry is to be used. And again, my other question is about the public safety building. I did ask the question on the 7th of January. The response I got from the town manager was on the 21st of January, which is four weeks later. I still do not have any answer about what's going on with the public safety building and our new fire station, our renovation of the police station, whichever is going to happen. And I'll repeat myself again. I started going to town meeting in 1992 as a member of the advisory committee, and that was being brought up then by Frank Palmeri. And now we're here in the year 2020 and there still is nothing. So I think we really need to get on the ball with this one and stop dragging our legs. I know it's going to cost a taxpayer money, I understand that. And I am retired and I know what it's going to cost, but I think it still has to be looked at.
We have been meeting with the company that is doing the investigation on the public safety building, whether it's going to be a fire station, whether it's going to be a combined fire station, police station. There are four alternative sites that they've looked at. They've put the sites together with the pros and cons of each site. We are having a meeting with them, I believe, next week, I think it's next week or the week after. Yeah, next week or the week after. They have come up, and I've seen at least one of the full plans that they have, and then we will be looking at the other three plans and determining which is the right plan, we'll be bringing it before they're going to have public meetings. But of course, the big issue is the money. And even though we have some money that's been put aside by the state, it would take some kind of an override to get this thing built.
I think override is the one term.
It's a dead exclusion.
Oh, dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion. Again, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic or fresh or anything else. You know this, the town manager knows this, the people in the town don't know this. I mean, something could go out, even if it goes into manager's log, something can go out saying, this is ongoing, the decisions haven't been made, we are meeting with these people, this has been going on. I don't think people know that.
Well, in the letter I wrote you, it said the firm that we had contracted out to do the feasibility study, the study's not done, so that's what's still being worked on. It's still, again, like, it's a work in progress. It's not, when we have some of these meetings and there's, we're closer to a decision point, we'll talk about it, but they're still, they were still studying sites when, I mean...
But the president of the council has just given me more information than I've known or anybody else has known, unless you put me to it on the council. But, I mean, in my book, I mean, I don't think other people know that. I'm sure the fire chief knows it.
Yeah, I'm sure the fire chief and police chief know.
Right.
I don't know that all the other councils know it, yes.
Basically, like I had said in the letter I wrote, and that memo was public because that was my manager's report for that week, it said that we were going to discuss it publicly when the study was done.
Yes.
So the study's not going to be conclusive of where the site is or anything like that.
But again, I'm going to, and I hate to keep repeating myself, I learned more just now than we have.
Okay.
I mean, I think, knowing that there is a possibility of four different sites, of four different whatevers, then that's more knowledge than we've ever had.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? We have your email, I'm going to make it part of the record if you...
Excellent. With Mark Chaplin, Precinct Four. I just had some concerns, much like Nick, I'm the chairman of the licensing board, and the committee handbook I heard was coming out, I'm sure on the agenda. I was a little bit concerned because we hadn't seen it yet, and I just thought it would be helpful if the boards, I see Mr. Schmidt here also, I think if the boards had an opportunity to view it, we may have constructive feedback since we're in the trenches, and it might be helpful. So, prior to voting on it, I don't know if it's on the agenda to be voted tonight, I would ask that just give it an opportunity for us to take a look at prior to making any decisions on it. I can't comment on it because, again, I don't know what it says. Thank you.
Just as a, well, we can discuss it when we get to it.
He's a big question.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, move on to correspondents. As I said, we've got an email and correspondence from Mark Chaplin, and that will be made part of the minutes. Unfortunately, we also got a letter from Norman Hyatt, who was the chairman of the conservation committee, and he has resigned that position. So, there will be an opening on the conservation committee. Anyone that's interested in being on the conservation committee, please fill out an application, you can find it online. We would like to replace Norman as soon as possible, and I just want to point out that Norman Hyatt has been on this committee for many, many years. He's been a great public servant to the town, and we hate to see him go. And I'm asking the council to agree to have a public appreciation of Norman Hyatt at our March 10th meeting with a certificate, and ask him to come and to receive that for the work that he's done for so many years for the town of Winterford. Moving on, committee reports. Finance committee first.
Finance committee met earlier this evening. We had four items on the agenda, which will be coming up during the public hearings. The first item was to appropriate $690,000 to pay the cost of replacing lead water service lines. Again, all these will be discussed in the public hearing, they all came out with favorable recommendations. I could go over them more now or go over them more at the public hearing, but we discussed these four items, which I will discuss during the public hearings. The meeting was adjourned at 6:45.
Okay, and the Millerfield committee?
Millerfield met last week. The majority of the meeting was to give an update on the fieldhouse, which is going very well. The Northeast Vocational students are not there on an everyday basis now, they're there more periodically, they have some other projects they're doing. We still feel comfortable for an April, I believe it's April 3rd, dedication of the building. Other discussion that was done was we discussed, we're hoping to have a meeting very soon, probably the beginning of next week, and hope to include the golf club. We're trying to work on a package to do a shed replacement for the golf club that was taken down by the Millerfield committee prior to the, at the beginning of the project. So we hope to get that underway in a short period of time. Other than that, everything is going well.
It's the second, I'm sorry.
The second, so the dedication is April 2nd. I believe it's also the first night, maybe for spring sports for, I'm not sure if it's boys' lacrosse or girls' lacrosse, but I believe there's a lacrosse game that evening following the dedication.
Rules and ordinance committee.
We had a meeting last Tuesday to take up changes for the taxi license ordinances. At the meeting, we heard from Mr. Sean Clouin, who was the owner of Winterford Taxi, who explained some of the challenges that are associated with operating a business with the increased competition from rideshare companies. And the thrust of the meeting surrounded a requirement in our ordinances that vehicles that have taxi licenses be no older than four years old. It was noted at the meeting that surrounding communities do not have these types of regulations, and further that Uber and Lyft companies allow cars that are much older to be serviced. So after hearing from, about, and talking about this issue, the committee discussed the motion that would take the four-year standard out of the ordinance and replace it by allowing the police department to make these inspections, and so that they would be the individuals who would oversee the quality of the cars. The committee, at the end of the meeting, recommended passage unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Come up on the new businesses, well, under old business, I'm sorry. Appointment committee, committee?
Yeah, we like to call it the committee of committees, just for short.
The committee of committees.
Yeah, we met last Tuesday here at, on the 11th, and on the items, the items up for discussion was the handbook, which we've already talked about here, as well as the town council employee evaluation forms. You know, as, we have a couple different options that we're looking at, but the most important thing for us is to get these evaluation forms out so people have plenty of time to do them. I know people don't like doing them. And, you know, we also want to make sure that we're fair and give everybody the proper evaluation that they deserve. And with the handbook, we had, we passed the handbook three to nothing out of committee, and we have also added some amendments to it, which come from older versions that we've seen in the past. Stuff that would be beneficial just in terms of following. So it's got, the old one had a checklist in the back, we've reincorporated that into it, as well as some other minor tweaks. So, that's what we got right now.
Okay, thank you. Town managers' report.
Sure, so I distributed this amongst a group. There's one edit on the second page that I'll note in a minute. So with Win 2030, the MIPC is going to work with the town on the Win 2030 visioning document. This is part of my budget message, that the town needs to clarify its vision for the future, and some of the metrics that they would like to meet for 2030. A team from MIPC will be touring the town on Monday with, most likely, former council president Ron Vecchia, to get a sense of the town and get a tour. I know Ron actually gave me a tremendous tour when I first came to town, so I think he could introduce them to a bunch of the different neighborhoods around town. Then, there will be a managers advisory committee that's currently being appointed, I guess, this week or next week. And they will be meeting with the MIPC beginning in March, and then public meetings will follow soon after, most likely beginning in April. We're going to continue to push communications out from my office, and we're going to use the hashtag #Win2030 for this. Again, I've talked about some of these efforts in terms of branding, that we as a municipality can do a better job of communicating with the public and branding our specific projects. So we're going to try to actively do that going forward, to ensure that this information doesn't just get out over social media, but it has a cohesive and comprehensive viewpoint from it whenever we put out communications. So the Center Business District Infrastructure Project, work on the project will begin in April. It will be a nine-phase project, and the first phase will focus on French Square. The town is meeting with the contractor for on this project, GOSO, on Tuesday, and we will be discussing the timeline of the multiple phases, the public meeting that will be held in March, and the chain of communication surrounding the project. Again, we want to ensure that everyone in the community has the ability to be well-informed about this project and knowledgeable of the impacts, and if there is an impact that they did not foresee, a clear chain of communications of how to get in touch with both the contractor, the engineers, and our public works department, as long, as well as my office. This will hashtag #WinCenterBusinessDistrict, and that will be the best way to get most up-to-date information, but we will have a website dedicated to it in town, on the town website as well. So we will work very hard to get this information out and have it as part of these council meetings, and the town manager's blog, and every other possible way I can get it out. With the middle school redevelopment, we're going to contract the services of Nasi Hangin Brussels, which is more commonly known as VHB, they're a planning, a professional planning firm. They will help facilitate the rezoning and initial bid process for the former middle school site. They're going to work with KP Law to give us both a planning and legal perspective through the process. They will be at the disposal of the joint subcommittee, then the council, then the planning board, throughout the process, so we can get this process to the point, we can get to the point that we have a bid document ready to go out.
Do we have a date where we, they're coming into town, so we can have the joint meeting?
No, I do not have a date for that, though. There will be two public meetings on the topic of this zoning project, so there can be robust public discussion. This will be prior to it even entering the joint subcommittees and the town council. I don't have a date for that, but this is something that would be kicking off in March. So, I'm trying very hard to get them committed to a potential joint committee, joint subcommittee meeting in March for this, because, well-established, this is super-important in town, just want the planning and legal perspective represented at all steps along the way, so that we alleviate all of the concerns in town, we hear everyone out about the zoning of it, we have clear messaging that we want reflected in the RFP document, as well as some of the interactions with Article 97, have some language in there concerning the inclusion or non-inclusion of the ice rink, if it is included in the zoning, what do you, how do you effectively communicate that in a bid document, those types of things. These people can help us through that process, so we're less vague when we put out documents to the business community. So again, we will be pushing out communications on this. The hashtag for this is #WinMSMiddleSchoolFuture, or MS Future, and we will push out information accordingly on that. Tapsav and Shirley Intersection is currently in a permitting process for the redesign, and the intersection has been through engineering. I will have a timeline for the work at the March 3 meeting. And then, there are some additional items that I just wanted to run through quite quickly. Ms. Friedman here is going to be filling the role of chief financial officer, assistant town manager. She will assume all the responsibilities of the town manager when I am available, unavailable to do so. Congratulations, Anna. The budget presentation will be on March 24th. I had put March 17th in here, that's incorrect, the meetings are changed in dates, so March 24th is the new presentation date. The Zero Waste Committee, which was another thing that was noted in the budget message, has produced a draft report that my office is currently reviewing. It looks like the final version of the report should be available in March and can help inform some of the budget message for the fiscal '21 budget. The town council will participate in an off-site training session on February 29th pertaining to what Council Luttey discussed earlier. The town is currently researching a maintenance facility for the Winterford Golf Course, and the outstanding request for a dog park is being researched simultaneously. Costs in engineering are being pursued, and we are working our way around a funding source for the dog park as well. So hopefully, some of these items, we will have some more progress on in the, hopefully, near future, so that we can have some more substance to discuss in these meetings. Any questions? Great, thank you.
Questions, councilors? Okay, we'll move on to the school committee report. I attended my second school committee meeting a week or two ago, and it was a very informative meeting. I want to read a letter that we received, or a part of a letter, that we received from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which says that at the Committee on Public Secondary Schools, it's October 21st to 22nd, 2019 meeting, reviewed the report from the recent collaborative conference visit to Winterford High School, and voted to award the school continued accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. That's very good news, that we've been getting this continued accreditation since the bad report way back in 2011. This committee will be coming back in, in 2021, to do its 10-year annual review, and it seems like everything is going very well. The report that they gave us, they're looking for just two items, and the two items were for the school to hire a library media specialist for the school library. So that job opening will be posted by the school department soon, and if anyone is interested, let them know that we are looking for a library media specialist for the high school, junior high school. The other great news is that the ATC Cummings School across the street playground has been approved, and they are going to start building on the beginning of May, and it will be opened at least two weeks before school closes, so that the students at the ATC Cummings will have an opportunity to use that playground before the year ends, as well as all the citizens of Winterford during the summer. Okay, and that's the end of the school committee report, so we will go into public hearings. And the first public hearing is that the town council appropriate the sum of $690,000 to pay the cost of replacing the lead water service lines. Any, I will now open that public hearing. Is there any comment from the public? Hearing none, is there any comment from the council?
Council president, the finance committee met this evening on this. This is, basically, it's an unfunded mandate from the state. We have roughly 800 to 900 homes in Winterford that still have some sort of lead water service lines, and we have been replacing them at an average of about 80 to 90 yard homes a year. So it's basically a 10-year project right now, we have, I think, nine years left. This is a zero-interest loan to repay this, so it hits us about $69,000 a year, and it is something that is not new. We have been doing this for a number of years, and we hope to continue it. It came out of committee with unanimous positive recommendation.
Okay, any other councilors?
Do you have a year of this 10-year plan that we're in with us?
Well, I'm just saying, if you roughly figure it out, we have about 850 yard homes, we do about 89 years, so we have 10 years left, we've been doing it for a number of years now.
Okay, so some people are going to be stuck with that.
Yes, and there's not a, there's not like a list, you're number one, two, three, it's done based on what's going on in the town and other projects we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comment? Hearing none, I'll close that public hearing. And open the public hearing, should the town council appropriate the sum of $609,750 to pay the cost of upgrading and replacing existing sewer lines on Palmyra Street and Crescent Street? Any public wish to be heard at public hearing on this? Council.
Council president, the finance committee also met this evening to discuss this item. This is part of the MWRA sewer infiltration system, so we are authorizing the complete amount of the project. This is paid for with grant, 75% grants from the MWRA, and the rest, our portion on this would roughly be, I want to say, $152,000 and change, which would also be a zero-interest loan. And we also did have unanimous approval and positive recommendation on this project.
Any other councilors want to be heard on this?
Is that work going on now?
Some of it is going on now.
Okay, councilors, Farino?
This doesn't have anything to do with overflow or rain runoff, right? This is just sewage?
I believe so, yes.
Any other councilors? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing and open the public hearing, shall the town council appropriate the sum of $298,500 to pay the cost of a sewer infiltration and inflow assessment study? Any public wish to be heard on the issue? Karen?
I guess, I guess I just don't know what this is for. What are we studying?
I think you'll be told in a minute.
Oh.
So the, so the finance committee did meet this evening, Karen, on this subject, and basically, this is also part of the water infiltrate, the sewer infiltration system from the MWRA, so this is, again, being fully authorized by us. 75% of this is coming from a grant from MWRA, the other 25% will be financed by us. To get into this, we have to accept the program, and it's a 0% loan, so it's $7,500 a year. This gives us, the best indications we have, is this gives us an assessment of our sewer systems underneath to see where problems might be. It also potentially helps us with insurance claims, such that we're doing our due diligence to see where potential problems might be, and to try to kind of give us a prioritizing of future projects to come.
So this isn't going to help at all with our...
It's not going to improve any...
Assessment on the, on the monies that we pay?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
No, and there was also a question asked if this would help us, because one thing that we are concerned about is to try to find, we have a relatively high loss water, and this does not, as far as we know, this does not affect... this does not, as far as we know, this does not affect that, and that is something that we are working on to try to find.
Any other comments, any other questions?
And there also was positive recommendation on this.
Hearing none, I will close that public hearing and open a public hearing on, shall the Town Council appropriate, I'm sorry, transfer $24,316.80 from Fund 727RRAP rideshare? Anyone in the audience who wants to speak public on the rideshare money?
Where's that money going to go?
Finance met on this earlier. This is money that comes into us basically from Uber and Lyft, from a fee that the state charges. It's obviously, I mean, $24,000 is a lot of money. This is a two-year allotment. I'm sure cities like Boston get hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars from this. But, so this is, we get a portion of this money every year. This is a, our first year was a little over $10,000. Our second year was a little under $14,000, so it seems to be going up, more rideshares. There is dedicated use for this money that has, you know, that should be used to help the roads that these Uber and Lyft are being driven on. I believe, maybe the Town Manager could speak, he has an idea or thought process as to how to use these funds, I believe. So, it did come out of committee with positive recommendation. It will be discussed in old business, but I'll let the Town Manager speak on it.
Sure. So, one, it's a priority in town that we have is road striping around the town. That is where this starts. Then additional pavement markings would be pursued with that. There has been a fair amount of desire concerning the bike infrastructure in town. This would by no means facilitate a bike lane being constructed anywhere. One example of something this could be used on is a bike share road network around town, and a little more sensibility of the share the road type of mentality, not just for cars, for everyone. So, we're going to explore some different options of how to add additional markings to the roads to increase safety for everyone. So, I am with the same engineering firm that is looking at the intersection of Pleasant and Main. I'm having discussions with them about helping the TAC kind of flesh out their, their transportation network plan that they had presented previously for potentially signage and markings that could coordinate with that as well. So, no specific project right at this moment, but circling around a few different things for it.
So, just going to the general budget then?
No, it goes into
It goes into a specific fund. That's what the transfer is for. And when we, as discussing it in the committee, the committee had some suggestions also from the Town Manager, and most of it surrounded the share rows, and I let Tracy speak on that because she was very vocal about it.
May I?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's open discussion.
With this money, I'd like to ask that the Town Manager's Office consider adding to street safety and consider those on foot and on bicycle. Who's most likely to be on foot or on bikes? Our kids. And I don't think it's enough to say that this money will be used to prep roadways for future bike markings. I'd like to see this money used to enhance public safety markings now, namely, bike share rows. And I just want to, for those who don't know what a bike share row is, we've all seen them. It's not a bike lane, and I was really encouraged to hear you talk about the public safety and the markings. So, a share row is basically, it's that stencil picture of somebody on a bike, and it creates awareness, raises awareness that our, that we share our streets with people on foot and people on bikes, kids on bikes. You know, so we're all about public safety. We all care about our kids, as well as crosswalks. You know, it could be used to delineate crosswalks, to increase the number of crosswalks, to encourage people to walk. We're a small town, not much more than a square mile. I don't see a lot of people out walking or biking. I'd like to encourage people to walk and bike more. It's a beautiful little town, right? We all love our town, but I think we need to encourage more people to bike and walk, especially, you know, I know, maybe right now, tonight, not such a walking time, but I think we'd enjoy our town a lot more if we could just get out more and see each other more and pass by, you know, people doing yard work and people just out and enjoying, enjoying Winthrop. And again, it's just to encourage safety and encourage people to get out and get around Winthrop. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to back up Tracy and also mention that my precinct has a lot of seniors in it, and there are a lot of walkers around there, and I would like to see the crosswalks enhanced. And sometime possibly in the future, can we get audible crosswalks?
Yes. Follow up with me about that, about specific locations. And one note with the crosswalks, we can repaint crosswalks, the incorporation of new crosswalks. There's a specific procedure to do that through the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee, and having like traffic engineers involved in that type of thing, but that message understood.
Okay.
Okay. Council of the Month?
Austin, have we looked into, has anybody looked into three-dimensional crosswalks?
So, I have. They are not approved by the MUTCHD, whatever, the regulations concerning roadways. So, and the reason why this came to my attention was the additional work that will happen on Revere Street in 2023. They actually noted that our crosswalks that have the blue and white aren't painted correctly. They're only supposed to be white to indicate crosswalks. Municipalities have taken it upon themselves to do those in somewhat like public processes of come paint an intersection or come paint a cross, paint around a crosswalk to draw attention to it. That said, Mastha doesn't approve of the three-dimensional ones or the ones with different colors on them. So, again, it's up to us to enforce on those, in those areas. So, it's one of those things, we can do it, but it's, we may want to just work through a process to make sure we get everyone on board with the correct way to do it. But it's not to say that you can't do those. It's just those aren't approved transit-related markings.
Anyone else have any comments? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and move, open the public hearing to amend ordinance 5.28.060 license and conditions for vehicles. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on the ordinance on the taxi cabs? Anyone? Council?
So, like I said in my report from the News One Committee, this essentially would take out a rigid standard that says all taxi cabs need to be four years or newer, and it would allow the police department to make the judgment call on whether or not the taxi cab is eligible to be in the road. And this is on top of any other regulations that would require taxis to be on the road that you have on your cars. So, any types of stickers that you need to get, regular maintenance that needs to be done, those things would still be in place as well. And we had this come out of committee with unanimous approval.
Any other councils wish to be heard on the issue? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and all public hearings are now closed. We will move into old business, and I'll call on the Finance Committee with the motion, I believe.
Council President, I move that the Winthrop Town Council adopt the following order: that the town appropriates the sum of $690,000 to pay costs of replacing lead water service lines, including all costs incidental and related thereto; that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow set amount under the pursuant to Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1, or pursuant to any other enabling authority; and to issue these bonds or notes of the town, therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority, and in connection, therefore, to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority and other rights to contract with the authority with respect to such loan and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing, therefore, that the Town Manager is authorized to accept and expand any grants or aid available for the project and/or financing, therefore, provided that the amount of the authorizing borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants and aid received; that the Town Manager is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project, and that any premiums received upon the sale of these bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premiums apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment or cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Okay. Does not need a second, since it came out of committee. Would any council like to be heard on this issue?
As discussed earlier, the Finance met and has positive recommendation on this.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'd rather have a roll call vote, please.
Yeah. All those in favor of the appropriate sum of $690,000, please listen for the roll call.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
Council President Boncory?
Yes.
Council President, the purpose of this motion is to authorize $69,750 for the Palmyra Street and Crescent Street sewer improvement project. The town is, again, seeking funding through the MWA Inflow Infiltration Loan Program, 75% grant, 25% loan. The goal of this project is to upgrade and replace existing... Excuse me one second. I don't know why it's not giving me the motion, giving me the... Okay, I'm sorry. Let's start again. That the town appropriates the sum of $69,750 to pay cost of upgrading and replacing existing sewer mains on Palmyra Street and Crescent Street, including all costs incidental and related thereto; that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 8, Paragraph 14, or pursuant to any other enabling authority; and to issue bonds and notes to the town, therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow any or a portion of such amount from the MWRA and in connection here with, to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the Town Manager is authorized to accept and expand any grants or aid available to the project for the financing thereof, providing that the amount of the authorized borrowing for the project shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aid received; that the Town Manager is authorized to take any other actions necessary to carry out this project, and that any premium received upon the sale of the bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of the bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment or cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
You running out of breath yet?
This did come out of committee with positive recommendation. Does not need a second.
Do you want to let one of the other committee members read the next one? Okay, the motion before the council is to appropriate the sum of $609,750. Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Another motion from Finance Committee?
Yes, Council President. I move that the Winthrop Town Council adopt the following order: that the town appropriate the sum of $298,500 or pay costs, to pay cost of a sewer in system infiltration and inflow assessment study, including engineering services and surveys, and all other costs incidental and related thereto; that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 7, or pursuant to any other enabling authority; and to issue bonds or notes to the town, therefore, that the treasurer with the approval of the Town Manager is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the MWRA or the authority, and in connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement and/or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loans, and for any grants or aid available for the project or for the refinancing thereof; that the Town Manager is authorized to accept and expand any grants or aid available for the project, or projects shall be reduced by the amount of any such grants or aid received; that the Town Manager is authorized to take any other actions relatively, other action necessary to carry out this project, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this order, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of the issuance of the bonds or the notes must be applied to the payment, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this order in accordance with Mass General Arch, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. It came out of committee with positive recommendation. Does not need a second.
Since the commander of committee does not need a second, the motion is that the Town Council appropriate the sum of $298,500. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Council President, I move that the Town Council transfer $24,316.80 from Fund 727RRAP rideshare to General Fund Special Article Number 0196058-5881XX, fiscal year 20TNC, mitigation payment improvements, or take any other action relative thereto. Came out of Finance, does not need a second, does not need a roll call vote.
Okay. The motion before us is to transfer $24,316.80. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous. Okay, the next motion is coming from the Rules and Orders Committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council vote to amend Town Ordinance 5.28.060 license condition for vehicles, and amend Section A to include all vehicles must pass inspection by the police department as to the condition of such vehicle, and strike Section B in its entirety. It came out of committee with a favorable recommendation.
Okay, since it came out of committee favorably, it does not need a second. I think we still will take a roll call. The motion before us is to amend Town Ordinance regarding license condition for vehicles.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Christopher?
Yes.
Council Honin?
Yes.
Council LaConte?
Yes.
Council Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay. Now, call on the Committee on Committees and Appointments to make a motion.
We're going to skip over the employee evaluation and just go right into the book.
Either way?
Yeah. So, as discussed earlier, we met on the employee evaluation forms. That's a work in progress, so we'll get into that at our next meeting. As far as the committee handbook is concerned, we went through the committee handbook, and we actually made motions to add a couple items to it. For example, the public body checklist for creating and approving meeting minutes, public body checklist for posting a meeting notice, public body checklist for entering into executive session, advice from the veteran board members, and under meetings and procedures, we added, which one?
The one about remote.
Yes. For attendance, if necessary, but not on a regular basis, only up to one-third of the committee members may attend remotely and be counted for quorum processes, purposes. These people would not be able to vote. It's just a way of moving us into the 21st century with baby steps by, you know, people who are in the subcommittee meetings, they do have jobs, they have to work. Might be an emergency, one of them can't make it. It would be beneficial for them to actually be able to phone in, in that situation. And only in 66% of the, of the subcommittee would have to be in attendance. Only one of the three would be able to do it remotely. Those are the, and also numbering the pages for the table of contents. We thought that might be beneficial as well. So, these amendments to add to the...
And I believe they've all been put into the
They've all been put in. You haven't seen these, have you? No. No. So...
Anybody except for...
To motion.
Yeah. So, what I would advise is, you know, what you said makes sense, I think you guys should get to see this. My understanding is that we can make amendments to this whenever we want. So, we are going to have a meeting probably next week for the Committee for Committees. I'm going to make sure, if we can, to make sure that they get a copy of this so you can see it, and any concerns, any ideas, I'd love to have you come to our next meeting if you could, and express anything you want.
Right.
You want?
Counsel President?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make a comment. The handbook, the new handbook, the 2020 handbook, was put together by HR Director with all the updated necessary information about sexual harassment claims and so forth. The handbook's been worked on for quite some time. What was presented to the committee were two different handbooks, there was an old copy of a handbook that Counsel Clark had made up a few years ago, or maybe longer, and the two were then, I guess, combined by our committee by taking some from each book and coming up with this final book to be approved and voted on tonight. Okay, is that correct?
That's fairly accurate, we used the most recent one, but there were some items in the older one that we thought were very useful, so we added some of those items from the older one to the new one, but nothing from the new one was taken out, we just added to it.
Okay. All right, so this motion to approve the new handbook with the amendments that the committee put forward, which does not need a second since it's coming out of committee, but on discussion.
Counsel President, and I apologize, I haven't had the opportunity to really look at these changes, I know they were sent out in a timely manner, I haven't had a chance to look at them. I know Counsel DeMarco just said he was going to make changes noted next Tuesday, would it be, would it be okay with the council if I made a motion to table this to the next meeting, so that we could vote on it in the next meeting? It will at least enable me to be more informed, I don't know if any other council needed that time or not.
Yeah, I think that it would probably be in our best interest, it seems like there's a group of people who want to get some comments in on this before we pass it, and not that, you know, we, we did go over it, but at the same time, I think it would be important. So, I would, I guess I'll make the motion since that was more in the form of a question.
Yep, it was.
I will make a motion to table for two weeks for the purpose of soliciting public comments on the committee handbook.
Second.
Okay. You're going to make motion to our next meeting?
Yes.
Our next meeting, yes, you're right. So, I guess we might switch that due to the election, so at our next public meeting, so not two weeks.
Okay.
Seconded for discussion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table.
Table to our next council meeting.
The, when we get the right title of it, Town of Winterf appointed committee board handbook, 2020 addition to the next town council meeting, all right, it's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion on it?
Would it be possible to, Denise put out something for us that had the red, in red, the amendments that we made, it's electronic already, would it be possible to put it out into a more public forum so that these committee members could get a copy of it?
You can put...
We can email it to the committee heads.
I suppose you could just...
We'll post it on website.
Put it, post it on the website, the entire book.
Okay.
And then, everybody that has any comments on it can come back before the next meeting with whatever comments they have, all right? These committees are all appointed by the council to serve the council, so we are giving them a tool to do that with, by creating this handbook. Hopefully, everybody in here is, you know, the, how do you take the ethics test, how do, you know, treat your other council members, how to treat the public when they come in, and so on and so forth. Also, in the additions, there are rules on how to run a meeting, the robust rules, bullet points, and so on, and it's for the use of the committees that are appointed by the council.
Okay.
And it goes to all committees.
Call for vote on the amendment?
Yes, motion's been made to table this to our next meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. It will be put on to the next meeting. The next item I have on the agenda is to reappoint the School Building Assistance Committee. The School Building Assistance Committee still has a job to do, it's not completely finished in the use of the funds that were appropriated for the new middle school, high school. This committee was appointed many, many years ago.
2011.
And, 2011, and I think it was, last time it was brought up to the council and reappointed was like 2017, so it's been over three years since these people have been appointed to serve, and in that time, many of the people that are, have to be there by law, you know, such as, have changed. So, I'm reappointing that committee tonight, and I'm going to pass the gavel, and I make a motion that the following people are appointed to the School Building Assistance Committee, and I am appointing co-chairs. The co-chairs will be David Darkendorf, who was present in here, and Mary Lou Osborne. They both served as co-chairs in the past one, and they've been very helpful. I'm appointing Vinnie Crossman, David Gerard, Karen Chavez, who's in the audience, Barbara Flavin, Bob Demento Jr., Rob Paul Giella, who's also in the audience, Richard Lawton, Monica Ford as the town treasurer, Jim Luteri from the town council, Matt Crombie, who's the high school principal, Gus Martucci, who is the representative of the school committee, the school committee voted to appoint him onto this committee, Michael Filipko, who was the school facilities manager, Lisa Howard, a new superintendent of schools since the original formation, Anna Friedman, our new CFO, Austin Faison, town manager, and unfortunately, I don't know how, but I appoint myself because by law the CEO has to be on the committee.
Congratulations.
Those appointments have been made, so the, I'm sure that the, the co-chairs will be calling a meeting relatively soon. There is a sum of money that was left after the MSBA audit, and it's some kind of timeliness that we, I'm sure the committee will be asking for guidance and help from the superintendent, who I'm sure has many items after, they've been there for a year and a half, so those will go, get vetted through the committee and voted on in a timely manner. Pass the gavel back to Council President, thank you.
We're going to pick a motion.
Oh, you made the...
Yeah.
All right. Second on the motion, second by Counsel Flackot, any discussion on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to new business, and under new business, we had a motion that came to us, I believe that wants to update the town fee schedule, it's time to do that. I think the person that brought it to our attention, that we needed to change some of the things there, it was outdated, was Harbor Master, and so I am going to assign that to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, because it is in the, the ordinances. All right, so please have a meeting and take a look at that fee schedule, and hopefully we'll have a new fee schedule by our next meeting. The second issue is an update on the Fort Bank Access Road, and it's one of my priorities is to see if we can get the traffic flowing in a much better condition from that Fort Bank school, to alleviate the public safety issues that we have there, and we have been in contact with the people from Governor's Park and others, and we will be meeting with them very soon, but it's going to be, it's on the agenda as of now for an update. Anybody have any discussion on that? That will remain on the agenda, but I am going to send that to the Public Safety Committee. Okay, so you can have a meeting on that, and we will bring whoever else is interested into that meeting and see what we can work out. And the final thing, under new business, is the rescheduling of the town meeting for March 3rd. March 3rd is the primary election in the country, or in Massachusetts, not in the entire country, but in 12 states, and we're one of those 12 states. As you can see, somebody already posted, I guess the town clerk's already posted the ballots for the primaries, so anybody can take a look at them anytime they want.
There's trainings today.
It was changed today?
No.
Training, training.
Oh, it was trading.
The poll work.
The other poll workers, but we have the ballots, and they're up there to take a look at.
Counsel President?
Because it's election day, we have a situation where our next two meetings are supposed to be March 3rd and March 17th, which is Columbus, I mean Columbus Day. I wish it was St. Patrick's Day and evacuation day. So, I want to entertain a motion.
Counsel President?
Yes.
I make a motion, I know you despise suspending the rules, but I am going to make a motion to suspend council rules and to adjust the meeting scheduled for March, instead of the first and third Tuesday of the month, I would suggest the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, which would be the...
March 10th.
10th and 24th. I would also request that the 24th be scheduled as the spring forum, and I would like to make that motion.
Motion has been made, is there a second? Okay, the motion before us is to change the date of the meeting from March 3rd and 17th to March 10th and 24th, and include the forum on the 24th. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote in so ordered.
Counsel President, one note about the election, there's early voting in town hall next week, that will be available, there's more additional, there's additional information on the town clerk's website.
Yes, we had voted to open up town hall for early voting for four days, I believe it is?
Yes, I believe it's Monday through Thursday.
No, it's Friday.
So, Monday through Friday.
I assume you have to.
Okay.
Okay. All right, public comment, any other public comment? Cam?
Just one thing, in the town manager's report, he mentioned a date, February 9th, 92, and I didn't guess what that was for, because that's Saturday.
February 29th.
That's for the town council to do an offsite training.
Oh, okay, the same as the...
New counselor training, that type of stuff, yep.
Okay, is there anything else under public comment? Any other public comment? Any counselors wish to say anything? Hearing none? Public relations, there is now, as we noted before, an open seat for the school committee. Anyone interested in being on the school committee, please file your applications this week, it has to be in by, I believe, the February 27th. We will be voting at our next meeting on March 10th on that appointment, we will also be voting on that meeting on the 10th for a member of the Conservation Committee to replace Mr. Hyatt, so anyone that's interested in being on the Conservation Committee or any other committee in the, in the town, please fill out an application online and get it back to us. One more, there is an open seat on the Transportation Advisory Committee, so that is also a committee that's very active in town, and they have one person that left that committee and will be filling that seat at the next meeting as well. So, you have the school committee, the Conservation Committee, and the Transportation Advisory Committee, all have openings to be appointed at our next meeting. Does anyone else have any other comments?
My understanding is that we can vote on two of those, but I believe the school committee seat needs to be a joint meeting between...
It is.
Okay, so they'll be informed on the 10th then?
Yeah, they will be informed, they have publicized it, they knew, and they were planning on the 3rd, but now that we've moved it, that meeting will be held, there's a joint meeting here on the 10th.
Okay.
It'll be a joint meeting prior to us going into our regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay? Any other counselors have any public announcements? Hearing none, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion's been made, is there a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned.